Good morning, members. I declared that we have a call at the scheduled time. And let's start the special F C meeting. There'll be two sessions this morning and running till one ten. And please keep your camera on the three other meeting. And the microphone will be unmuted under my instructions. And during your participation, you must use the virtual background function of the Zoom. The purpose of this special meeting is to scrutinize the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three appropriation. The estimates ensure that the of of funding would not exceeded the amount exceeded for the certain policy. Your question was directly relevant to the budget estimates. If the members like to follow up on the written response and please quote the reply serial number. If the members are not able to follow up with the written replies of the government, you can make a supplementary inquiries in writing and submit to the secretary before the end of meeting today. And these supplementary questions were only limited to the written replies from the government. Subject to the number of speakers, I would decide on the speaking slots. Today is a session on education. I welcome the Secretary of Education and his team. For the order and fair arrangement. To speak, please eliminate the raised hand indicators first. And please indicate your intention to speak. Let me first invite the Secretary for Education to deliver his opening remarks. Thank you, Deputy Chairman. Education is the key to nurturing talent and the government will keep on devoting resources to support policies for provision of quality education. The estimated total expenditure on education in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three is one hundred and eleven point nine billion dollars. Of this, the recurrent education expenditure increases by four point seven billion to one hundred and one point nine billion, accounting for about eighty percent of the estimated total government recurrent expenditure. The recurrent expenditure on education has over ten years increased by sixty-one percent with average growth rate of five point four percent for N M. This clearly demonstrates the government long-term commitment to investment in education. Our vision for education is to nurture our young people into quality citizens with a sense of national identity and social responsibility and affection for Hong Kong as well as an international perspective. The current term government has already allocated a total of over thirteen point five billion additional recurring expenditure for implementation of policy measures covering entire education system to enhance quality education. And the budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, our key areas include well, a commit to promoting edge national education and cultivating students and affection for our country. The A D B responsible for promoting and national education as schools to continue to adopt a wider rate of measures with a multi-pronged and coordinated approach, which include providing curriculum guides, developing learning and teaching resources, offering training for teachers, organizing live wide training activities for students and merely exchange programs for teacher and student, et cetera, to support schools effective planning and promotion of national education within and beyond the classroom so that teachers and students can gain a better understanding of our country's history and development, the constitution and the basic law, the national flag, national emblem, national anthem, as well as significance important to national security and develop a sense of national security. Strengthening our support for e-learning. The quality education from Q F has set aside two billion dollars to launch a three-year program starting from twenty twenty-one slash twenty-two school year under which one point five billion is allocated to subsidize schools to purchase mobile computer devices and portable Wi-Fi devices for loan to needed students. This initiative will facilitate the learning of students from grassroots families during the epidemic. And it is expected to benefit some three hundred and ten thousand students. Besides, five hundred million has been allocated to support new e-learning initiatives aiming at facilitating the development, enrichment and provision of e-learning auxiliary facilities. C, third promoting STEM education in primary and secondary schools to nurture student innovation. We have set up the standing committee on STEM education and are in a course of updating curricula, enhancing teacher training, providing resources for, et cetera. For the scrub curriculum, it would be now strengthening coding education and introducing learning elements on emerging technologies such as artificial intelligence with emphasis on developing student media and information literacy in a digital era. D, promoting development of vocational and professional education and training and support of flexible and diversified pathways for young people with different aspirations and abilities. The pilot incentive scheme for to employees and the pilot international study program under the teach, training and support scheme as well as the pilot scheme for studying of students or part professional part-time programs currently implemented by B T C will be extended for two years to benefit more trainees. The pilots could facilitate workplace loading and assessment, broaden learners' horizons and encourage continued education among the working population. We're also reviewing the diploma Y G and subsidy scheme and enhancing the program curriculum. The scheme will be regularized starting from twenty twenty-three slash twenty-four school year to continue supporting secondary six school leave as well as added learners in securing employment and pursuing further study. To support student with special education needs, the annual expenditure incurred by the government on integrated education has increased about one point five billion dollars a year to about three point seven billion and expenditure on special ed has increased from about two point five billion a year to about three point six billion dollars. In addition, we have provided very support measures for non-Chinese speaking students, including those with S E N from from pre-prim and secondary education and the estimated expenditure in twenty-one, twenty-two is about five hundred and sixty million in total. Apart from the above initiatives, it will continue to implement existing policy, including continue to enhance quality of kindergarten education in various aspect, providing more resources to support learning and teaching development in schools, providing support for students with diversities, et cetera. In particular, it's established government policy to implement small class teaching S C T in public sector primary schools. At present, about eighty percent of public sector primary schools in Hong Kong have implemented S C T. A total of forty-two will start implementing S C T in the coming three school years. By then, to respective percentage, their share would increase by nearly ninety percent. We continue to maintain liaison with the public sector primary school would had yet to implement S C T and the respective schools sponsoring bodies and encourage them to get prepared for early implementation when the conditions so permit. In addition, as mentioned in the budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, we have paid particular attention to strengthen our what if support measures for student in the face of the epidemic. The government will pay the examination fees for school candidate sitting for the twenty twenty-three Hong Kong diploma of second education examinations. The estimated number of beneficiaries is forty-three thousand and five hundred candidates. As chairman candidates, my colleagues and I will be happy to answer further questions from members. Thank you. Thank you, Secretary. So far, we have thirty speakers waiting to speak. Let's have three minutes per round. I tried to accommodate as many members. Let me read out the list. I'll read out to number twenty-five, Mr. Chiu Yun, Mr. Le Chong Kwok, Mr. Tony Che, Mr. Lee Sei Wing, Mr. Chairman Kong, Mr. Sheng Dong, Mr. Edward Lam, Mr. Yu Pat Lam, Mr. Ling Yow Wei, Mr. Lam Chien Sing, Mr. Sunny Chen, Mr. Horace Chang, Mr. Douglas Kuhn, Mr. Temple Kong, Ms. Yuenis Young, Dr. Priscilla Lam, Ms. Maggie Chan, Mr. Wong Chun Chek, Mr. Lam Kong and Mrs. Stanley, Mr. Stanley Liang, Mr. Guo Ling Lam, Mr. Su Che Kwong and Mr. So Che Wing. And well, for the last five, we see we'd have enough time. Okay, if we stay within three minutes, Mr. Chik Chi Yun, I want to follow up on A D B oh five five on free primary education. The government asked to, I may provide some estimates compared to the recent birth rate there is a gap. The birth rate has dropped sharply and we haven't taken into account of the population movements. I wonder if the government will review those projected figures. Was given the noticeable drop, how do we redistribute the resources? For the record, I disagree with abolishing schools and reducing classes. In August twenty-two, twenty-one, he conducted a review of kindergarten education. I wonder if the government can make some improvements, for example, providing support with diverse learning needs and set up a special education coordinators. Further improve the teacher-student ratio from one to eleven to one to eight. And what can boost the subsidy for a full day school? Well, while optimistic resources can improve the kindergartens. While there's lots of improvements for the preschool education, I support the government to resume face-to-face classes at the end of this month. Well, now that the parents, we need to get their children on an R H E. And some say that it's difficult to do the test daily and it's quite challenging for those with special educational needs. May ask the secretary, I hope they can keep this in view. If there's any room for adjustment, you can consider help this as a parent and get back their children back to school easier. I don't have much time left, well, to please succinctly. For the kindergartens, we'll be monitoring the population movement. Well, since the most kindergartens are privately run. Well, we are providing support based on the number of enrollments. Will continue to follow the established mechanism in our review. We will follow through with the suggest recommendations and to lobby for the resources for it. We will deliver what we promised. However, what can you to review the kindergarten service? As for the resumption of classes, we will keep this epidemic in view and to monitor the situation of R T tests. Next, Mr. Le Chong Kwok.
Thank you, Deputy. I'd like to follow up E D B oh oh three. On national security, education and national education. Okay, I can't see your face, Mr. Li. Can you see me now? Let me restart. And Deputy, my question is, oh, E D B oh oh three. On national education and national security education, the E D B has been criticized that it hasn't done enough on these two areas and not concrete enough and ineffective. This year, the E D B have changed course and has done a lot, for example, providing an online enrichment course for teachers and also an onsite national education workshop for teachers. In terms of the content, is it provided by the E D B or engaged or external publishers? And has it consulted the mainland education boroughs? And who are the instructors for this kind of courses? And have they evaluated the effectiveness and the performance and after attending these classes? What would be feedback from the teachers and how does the E D B handle the related issues?
Chair, we set great store by the teacher's understanding of national security as well as constitution, basic law and national developments. Over the past couple of years, we have put in additional resources and arranged further training for our teachers. It is mainly about engaging specialists in the area. We have some of such specialists in Hong Kong, such as those who helped draw the text of the basic law or other people in the legal profession or current or former members of the C P P C C or the M P C, they help give talks to teachers. The national educational authorities have also given us its bias scholar on the background information to the national security law. It's a text given to all teachers across the territory. It's a fairly authoritative text on national security for the reference of our teachers. In terms of the curriculum, after each training session, we get feedback from the instructors and those attending the teaching so that we can identify areas for improvement. In this area, we will keep working hard. This is a key area after all. Next member, Mr. Tong Lee Che. Thank you, Chair. As you just pointed out, Mr. Kevin Young, the government has put into massive resources into education. Secretary, you have also pointed that eighteen percent of the government's recurrent expenditure every year goes to education. We have high expectations of our expect of our education. You also mentioned something on vocational professional training. But I want to focus on university education. The Education Bureau emphasizes the autonomy of universities. But I see it that for universities, the training of talent in universities needs to tie into the needs of the government. Take the shortage of healthcare workers as an example. The government's universities need to provide training, need to provide a certain number of places for the shortage of healthcare workers. That's something Secretary should take note. Now, the drop in birth rate and students leaving our city. I support this initiative about small class teaching or S C T, but in the long term, some schools underperform. Should we be thinking about weeding out the strugglers? This is something we should consider in contemplating closing schools. And for school premises, we should have some flexibility. There may be a demand for primary school premises, but sometimes and then after a few years, there's a need for secondary school premises. If there are policies allowing for flexibility so that you can switch things around, say, when you need more secondary schools than primary schools at any given times, you can make the conversion. In those cases, you can have the flexibility and get a timing right. That's something I hope Secretary can consider. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. In terms of the demand for talent, for U G C funded universities, we give them funding every three years or over trienniums. We also provide these universities with information on the talent needed. We also have indicators in terms of the talent we need. For example, the number of healthcare workers and teachers we need, such efforts will continue. For other sectors, industries, we get relevant information from different departments and provide the information to universities. The number of schools available depends on the number of students out there. We will keep in view. And we will bear in mind the number of students and the teaching quality as well. In terms of incorporating flexibility into our design, we certainly give consideration to that. But we cannot make frequent changes to the number of primary and secondary schools out there. After it takes time when you switch sponsoring bodies, et cetera. We have made some switches in the past between primary schools and secondary schools. But when, say, we have many secondary schools around with some minor modifications, we can convert some of them into primary schools. In terms of the design, we will have our colleagues in on those tasks. Next, Mr. Lee Sei Wing.
Thank you, Chair. I want to follow up on E D B oh oh seven. I want to make two points. During these COVID times, there is pressure on parents. They have to help their children adjust to learning at home. These children are in their formative years and changes are happening with the children. And class resumptions are coming up. What measures will there be from the Education Bureau to support parents and students? In and for those who just moved on to primary one and secondary one in September last year, will there be more measures from the E D B to help these students adjust to the new school, a new environment? Because they were just confronted with causes suspension. And also something on class resumption about this daily requirements for R T tests. There is a certain extent of financial pressure on parents due to the R T test requirement. Many people are struggling financially, underemployment for many people, and there's a drop in income for many families. The daily R T test requirement for students will cost around four hundred dollars a month. And if they have two kids, that would be eight hundred dollars per month for that family, and that's a lot of pressure. As you saw, we have a country said we have to look after our young children and elderly. Secretary just mentioned measures to help pay for the H K D S C examination fee. Why can we not hand out rapid energy test kits to all students in preparation for the class resumption? Chairman. In terms of the class resumption, schools are in position to judge professionally how to help students. We also remind schools that classes have been suspended for months. There are younger children who may require extra care and attention. But in terms of the details, each student may require different care and it also may vary from family to family. So the work will involve the culture, each school, previous experience with looking after children and also the mode of teaching. These things need to be considered before the school and tell how to look after the students. Professional, in terms of professional matters, the schools are best left to take care of these things. But if there are other support that's required, we're happy to get in touch with schools to talk about those things. In terms of R T kits, we have explained the arrangements over the past few days. For those in financial need, we provide R T kits for free to these students. But for other people who may not be on full C S S A but still require short-term assistance, you can reach out to the schools. We will also provide extra R T kits to schools for those with sudden financial need. Next. Doctor Chow Man Kong. Good morning, Chair. I want to follow up on the U G C E D B oh six three two oh six six. Many people take an interest in talent development and the use of public funds by universities. In the reply, it said that the U G C funding. We raised this point about integrating to national development. Now, the reply says something about bold thinking, long-term thinking and taking into considerations the G P A related opportunities. But some people in the education sector have reflected to me that for those research postgraduate programs, there are task forces looking into these matters, but only two members of the eight-member group is Chinese scholars and just one is a local Hong Kong scholar. Chair, given this composition of the working group and the conveners from the U K, the U S, New Zealand, Singapore, my question for the U G C is that, well, if if we're out of time, then please U G C give me a written response. In appointing the members of this working group, can you give me the reasons and considerations? Why does the U G C habitually and disproportionately appoint Western scholars to sit on our working force? This is about the use of public funds. Is it appropriate? And given all these overseas scholars, how much do they know about our city and our country's development? Do they know about the fourteen-five-year plan? And in terms of the research postgraduate programs, now there will be a number of spots and it will probably involve a lot of public funds. We need innovation, technology, biotechnology, health professionals, given the composition of the working group. How can it contribute to the goal of integrating into the national development and making good use of our public funds? Thank you, Chair. I will invite the secretariat, Professor Tang, Professor James Tang. Chair. Professor Tang, please. I thank the member for his questions. Terms of integrating into national developments, the university grants committee approaches this issue and from a different level, from different levels, there are guidelines in place. We give consideration to a range of factors. In terms of planning for research postgraduate students, there is this working force and member has raised concern about the members on the working group. We are aware of the overall direction of the government. And we are all aware of the overall situation about the fourteen-five-year plan. A point when decisions are made based on, after considering the background, areas of specialty and experience of the potential members. The consultation exercise also involves lengthy discussions and exchanges with the relevant universities. As we see it, the issues raised by the member have been taken into account. Professor Tang, just then there were specific questions from Doctor Chow. Please give us a written response. Next, Professor Sun Dong. Thank you, Chair. I want to follow up my question E D B oh six six. In terms of using the funds, how, it's also something about how do we help us integrate into national development? Integrating higher education into national development, strengthening the education on constitution and basic law. These are things laid a solid foundation for for our students to integrate into national developments. But how do we refine the details and how do we make it tie in with the allocation of funds? And there are also concerns that in scrutinizing certain projects, there were loopholes. What will the government do to ensure academic fairness that the funds are used properly? The university grants committee provide most of the funding for the universities. They play a key role in the administration of higher education institutions. But it has failed to address the point of talent development. The U G C has continued the management culture from the times before that that handle from in terms of auditing and assessment. They are just replicating British practices. Does the government have plans? In terms of the management and institutions of the U G C, are there plans to reform, improve them? Secretary, please. Chair, I thank Professor Sun for his questions. On previous occasions, including meetings of the panel on education and on other occasions, I noted that many members have things to say about funding for universities via the U G C. Funding for universities via the UGC. How do we achieve results? It's more than just academic result. It's also about. Providing impetus for Hong Kong society, it's also about integration into national development. And nurturing our young people. Such that they can play a role and contribute to national development, serve Hong Kong in our country. Now, we have heard the message loud and clear. We all have promised. That along with members. We will have discussions about funding for universities. We're consolidating some information and hopefully the information can be tabled at the subunit to the panel on education. They would take time for such discussions to happen. I have heard your messages. The Education Bureau. Will provide the information for discussion as soon as possible. But this will take time before we can build this consensus on doing better in this area.
Next, Mr. Edward Lang. And thank you, Deputy. I would like to follow up EDB 064 in National Education. While you are invading your role of having major responsibility to promote national secret education. While acknowledging the school characteristic. The NSL is a bottom line. The administration should provide some guidelines to this institutions. However, this has to be provided to the postgraduate institutions. Would the administration? Make the NSL education compulsory with a mandated minimum of lesson hours? Secretary. In post-traiture education. That obviously slightly differ from Mr. Lang's. We do have a requirement of the universities that they need to take forward. National education and deepen understanding on the constitution and the national security. As for the ways. On how to promote it. We will respect the university's autonomy. That will. Be aligned with the objectives, however. I will try to obtain some information for the universities. For example, the different approaches and the course content. There we spot shortcomings or perceived shortcomings. Or where we detect room for improvement, we can definitely provide feedback. For the Hong Kong tertiary institutions. We may not need to mandate a curriculum or course content. As in the case of primary and secondary schools in the long run. By laying the groundwork in primary and secondary education, by the time they reach university. This is not just the fundamentals, it needs to have more in-depth discussion or provide more intermediate understanding. The universities. Can encourage a discussion or explore in-depth topics or engage different speakers. The results may be more effective. Does that mean that you will not make it compulsory or course subjects? On one hand, you want to promote that and however you ought to say that university autonomy, this is quite contradictory. That's why we are advocating that making the NSL education as part of the University Accountability Agreement, UAE, in the triennial plan. The national understanding and the natural education is included as a core subject. My fault with the university will put it in a high position. We're just saying that we will not provide a fixed curriculum. Or. Follow a certain, what however they are expect to follow. With our directives. Next, Mr. Yu. Let's follow up on EDB. Oh, three ones, a reply oh three three one seven. According administration. Until twenty two twenty three, the student exchange expenditure is about a hundred fifteen million. And since the twenty nineteen school year, the EDB allocated nine hundred million. For the. Government and the DSS school for lifelong learning grant. To organize a comprehensive local and non-local life-wide learning activities. But the past three academic years from twenty nineteen onwards, as we all know. Well, due to social turbulence and the epidemic, the students lost a lot of precious learning experiences. I see that the EDB has provided sufficient resources for diversified learning experience. While currently there's still no finding food travel between Hong Kong and the mainland, while. I believe that. The exchanges. May start around the Christmas. The younger generation understand the local culture and history. Is very important for them. And this will help develop the sense of belonging and the sense of national identity. And an understanding of national security. This kind of objectives can be achieved through organizing. Local extracurricular visits. The EDB recently announced that students receiving two doses can resume face-to-face classes. Well, for the half-day students, the other. They can conduct extracurricular activities. Okay, would the government consider organizing more local study tours? To provide a relevant kind of study experience? The tourism sector can provide itinerary planning to reduce their burden. I hope that Secretary can respond, Mr. Yang. We strongly encourage the schools. To make use of various public resources to enrich the student understanding of Hong Kong and the mainland. While we're encouraging the schools to, schools can mobilize their own resources, for example, the lifelong learning grant. And other grants. If the tourism in the sector can design a suitable local itineraries, the schools can definitely consider them. Next, Mr. Long, your way.
Thank you, Deputy Chairman. Just now, Mr. Yu was very concerned about. The exchange situation at schools. Well, a lot of colleagues before you mentioned, we need to develop a deeper knowledge of our nation. Just now, members mentioned that the exchanges were funded by various schemes. I wonder if we can conduct some online exchange with the sister schools and online guide of tours and online extracurriculars activities. I'd like to follow up on my question EDB 036. And for different subjects. We have more, we're more at places and. For commerce and hotel, etc. Well, by having many more new intake places, how do I assure the teaching quality? And are these measures in line with the new positioning of Hong Kong under the fourteenth five-year plan? For your first question. The school free deploy its own resources. And we also provide allowance on the sister, sister school schemes. I know some schools are resorting to online or other ways to keep in touch with their sister schools. Over the past few months. What the schools have switched to online learning and was advanced to summer break. So for the past few months after this Chinese New Year, things may have slowed down in terms of exchange with the mainland. I believe that when school resumes and gradually, especially. The interaction with the sister schools. Will gradually resume. And for your other question. Well, at the audio feed wasn't too clear. I think you're referring to EDB thirty six on the vocational training council in take places. Generally speaking, for, we will provide the VTC with the resources. If they see they need to boost certain in tax of certain programs to be in line with national development. Their correspondingly devote more resources to develop these programs. Thank you. Next, Mr. Lam Ching Shing.
And thank you, Deputy Chairman. Well, this year's budget devote some targets on the VPET vocational professional education. Which I agree, which allow young people, different strengths to develop their own careers. Like to follow on EDB 027, my own question. On. Of support measures to promote applied learning. The reply claimed that it would choose a certain professional domains and vocational fields. And you see there, the offerings have increased from fifty one to forty one to fifty six. I would like to know about the details. What's the criteria to review this course offerings? Would it consider matching the market demands? Well, for example, those with acute labor shortage or those in need of new blood. Or to do chat with future developers for some reindustrialization and promoting IT industry. Or emergent technology. Whether we can include this emerging industries? So that's my question on applied learning subjects and second. At the budget also mentions. That the. The training scheme for the VDC will be extended for two years. The pilot incentive schemes, the basic pay was eight thousand dollars. And for the construction industry, training their first hire than train programs. There allows over ten thousand dollars. I wonder if we can boost the salary to enhance the appeal. The twelve hundred places a year, what can you let be increased? And for the specific industries, I know the engineering technology and design. I wonder can be include more industries like F and B and infrastructure. A check more employers, because we need the employers to support our VPED education. I hope that you can enhance the pilot incentive schemes. And thank you, Deputy. So the first question is on applied learning. And every year. Will identify areas that will do tell what our future development. And so will help with the employability or those in with keen manpower demand. But also that match the students' interests. So these are the subjects that are outside of the traditional subjects that are more practical. And also let the students to try out the industries. For example, in F and B industry was like an IT industry. Of course, when expecting them to start working right away as soon as they come, finish studying subject. At least they get a taste of what these industries are like. So we'll continue to enhance our work in this front. As for the pilot incentive scheme, how to enhance it? We've heard. Mr. Lam, we know the employees' participation is important. As well, how much the employer should pay? Then we could discuss it with the employer organizations.
Thank you, Secretary. The first ten members follow the rule and the same goes for the secretary. So for the other members, the twenty sixth to thirtieth members, they should be able to get a chance to speak. I'll read out the names, Mr. Benson Look, Mr. Jane Michael Teen, Mr. Ma Phong Kwok, Mrs. Regina Ip. And Mr. Duncan Chu. Next, Mr. Sunny Ten. Thank you, Chair. My question EDB 001. It's about the admission of self-financing institutions. There is this bachelor's program related to textile. In terms of the data, in twenty twenty to twenty one, the school year that is. There were sixty spots, but only eighteen students were admitted. What plans do the authorities have to, in terms of promotion or reviewing the course content? So that the program becomes more attractive. And. More people can enter the trade after completing their program. The second question EDB forty seven. This is a question raised from Mr. Tang Fei. Many people are concerned about teachers' integrity and conduct. The Bureau has told us that the basic law and constitution areas incorporated in their training for new teachers and in-service teachers. In terms of training and promotion. For teachers who have completed thirty hours of core training. Will there be an assessment to ensure? Our teachers have adequate an understanding of the basic law, constitution and national security matters. Now, turning back to EDB 001. The subsidy level and admission or enrollment level of individual programs, institutions, there are factors at play here. We have a lot fewer and fewer students. Out there. So there may not be as many people eligible students to enroll in the program. We have three thousand spots for bachelor programs, but those enrollment levels may be just two thousand or so. So not every institutional program can admit students and fill up every spot out there. When it comes to individual sectors, it hinges on people's, students' understanding or interest in the sector. But in terms of the design of a program, this is something up to individual institutions. If there's under enrollment in a particular program, so. They will see the situation and seek to do better. I think the institution you mentioned is aware of a situation, then we'll look into how to do better. In terms of the work on teachers. There's core training, thirty hours on content. To give teachers an understanding in the relevant areas. We're also reviewing the training. The training is in its first year in running, it has been around for around a year or so. We're reviewing the effectiveness of our training and looking the ways to improve the program. As to the need for an assessment, we will also be reviewing this question in the exercise. Next, Mr. Horster. My question. Reply serial number EDB 007. During the epidemic. Students may need emotional support and this is an area of interest. The Bureau gave a reply at three levels, there is universal level of support. There is this information website. There's also. A way to descend to a platform for disseminating information, but this is one side and this is boring. You're saying that, look, we have the information on the website, students and parents should check out the website, but how effective is this? And second, at the selective level for teachers. There is this gatekeeper training for teachers, there are roughly two hundred training places. But how many teachers have signed up and taken part in the training? And that's not reflected in the reply. The third level, which is at a more selected level, indicated level. And that's not reflected in the reply. The third level, which is at a more selected level, indicated level. There's a subsidy at grand and it also covers students with mental illness. The hospital authority and the social welfare department have also launched a student mental health support scheme. And two hundred and ten schools have taken part in the scheme. But how many students? Have actually benefited from the scheme and that's not written. That's not reflected in the reply. Chair, classes have been suspended. But we have no idea how students are doing at home. We should pay attention to this and this is also we should pay attention to as classes resume. In this lengthy suspension of classes. There are other ways to pay attention to students' mental well-being. They're saying that. Teachers stay in touch with students over the phone, et cetera, but as I see it, it certainly happens. But this is a lengthy epidemic. How many calls have been made? How long is each is each call? How much can teachers find out about this to students over each call? That's something I have some reservations about. Can the Education Bureau give me a response about this? The for the three levels you mentioned in the reply. Can you provide us with supplementary information after the meeting on these things? Say information on number of students who require emotional support and the number of students who have taken part in the scheme. And after face-to-face classes resume. How can you follow up on the situation? Secretary, please. Chair. Home learning during the epidemic means there's less peer-to-peer interaction and so also less interaction between teachers and students. And that makes things hard. On these fronts. This is also the reason we're trying to get face-to-face classes resumed as soon as possible. So that when students are back in class. They are getting more than just knowledge. They can also receive care and interaction with their peers and get a support. In the days to come. We have made it clear to schools, it's more than just about classroom learning. Schools also need to take into account the other developmental needs of students and find a ways to support them. This requires ongoing discussions with schools, as I have explained. Practices vary from school to school. There's no one-size-fits-all approach in this area, but we have professionals in this area. Support will be provided where needed. The relevant work will continue. Thank you, Chair. Next, Reverend Peter Kun. Chair and Secretary. Reply serial number E D B O two one. It's about small class teaching. As you said, that small class teaching. Will be something that you will keep discussing with primary schools. But for junior secondary schools. I hope we could try small class teaching at junior secondary schools, but the Bureau said there is no plan in this direction. Does the Bureau realize that? In Hong Kong, many the classes are conducted in Chinese at primary schools, but. There are students who move on to English secondary schools, that is, classes conducted in English and people have difficulties adjusting. When you have small classes, students can get some help in this area. And for English as a medium of instruction, schools, students may struggle in learning. Small class teachings will certainly help students, but the Bureau does not appear to agree with this. I hope the Bureau can give me a response on this question. Will the Bureau consider and try this? That is small class teaching. You're saying there's no plan. In this direction. Can you do this like for seeing for junior secondary schools? Especially at schools where English is used as a medium of instruction. Can you try out small class teaching? Secretary, please. Chair, our view on small class teaching is that this is something, an approach in teaching. Many studies show that. For younger students. It's easier to look after such students in a small class setting, but as students grow up. The benefits of small class teaching start to diminish. That's why we're doing small class teaching at primary schools, but for secondary schools, we don't see such a need. Things have changed by the time students move on to secondary schools. At secondary schools, it's more about peer interactions. You can achieve the same effect with a larger class setting at secondary schools. This is a decision we have arrived after a professional consideration. The reference Peter Kun also mentioned about students. Adjusting to an environment where English is used as a medium of instructions or E M I. Students get to choose between an E M I mode or a C M I mode, Chinese as a medium of instruction for E M I schools. We expect schools. To achieve something here. As Reverend Peter Kun just said, some students. Are accustomed to a Chinese environment and then they move to E M I schools, but that we expect E M I schools to help students. But if schools struggle in this area, then there's no good. In training to provide instructions in English. In the long run, we will review these problems from time to time. Thank you, Chair. Next, Dr. Tan Yueheng. Chair. Secretary. In A D B O four four and O four five, I raised questions. About government's support for grassroots families in online learning. And also a question on new teachers taking part in basic law training. And also something about national security education. I thank the Education Bureau for giving me detailed responses. I want to. Waste questions over the breadth and depth of national education here. The Education Bureau said that. There are diverse teaching and learning resources on national education. But the resources are provided. That doesn't mean you have actually enhanced. The the education has the Bureau assessed the effectiveness of such resources. Are there ways to help teachers and students better their understanding of our country tomorrow, April fourteenth? Will be the second. National Security Education Day after the implementation of the National Security Law. The Education Bureau will hold different activities along with different schools on national security education. The activities and will hopefully inspire student interest in national security education. Are there plans on the part of the Education Bureau to take advantage of, say, October first and July first? To step up efforts in national education. Another follow-up question. The Education Bureau. Is trying to explore different mainland exchange programs, but due to COVID. These exchange programs will be hard to implement in the short term. But exchange between students in Hong Kong and their peers on the mainland shouldn't just stop due to the epidemic. Are there flexible plans in other areas? Say. Can arrangements be made with mainland museums? Online so that students can find out more about the countries and have something to do in their free time. Thank you, Chair. During COVID. Having exchange tools and getting students to visit different parts of mainland during these COVID times. Has been difficult because of the challenges related to COVID, but we seize every opportunity. We had this Tian Gong session. Where astronauts delivered talks. Our students in Hong Kong have taken part in these sessions. While similar efforts will continue. We're looking to waste. To help our students. Learn about different developments in our country. On different fronts. But for sure, once quarantine-free cross-country travel is resumed, we will have more. Exchange tours to the mainland so that students can learn about the diverse developments in our country. Doctor Tan, if you have further questions, you may have to follow up with the Education Bureau individually.
Ms. Chan Ho Yen. E D B O O one. I would like to follow up. On the specialized university. We don't have a B B E T university. Secretary mentioned, you hope that we could flexible articulation pathways. I really agree with it. Looking for the existing offerings, some of the intakes are rather low. For example, in two high college education, like the bachelor of size of computer science, thirty subsidized places, but only one actual intake. So may ask the administration. How do you find out why some of the programs are so severely under enrolled? And some of the students may see that some of these subjects are rather technical. They see that the tactic accreditation may not matches the traditional subjects. The last term, let's go visit the Finland. The countries have dedicated B P E T where students can learn happily whether a haughty culture or. Car mechanical engineering, they're able to obtain bachelor degrees for that. In the long run, would you? If want to watch toward the door track. We allow. Of these certain institutions be transformed into V P E T institutes. I know that the. Section is quite concerned about the students for twenty twenty one, you are regularizing the allowances. How of for, well, I know that they will reduce to long-term financial commitment. Well, they would need to spend a lot of money on mask and R T. I hope they can offer the allowances or you can just boost your student allowances assistance on that. On these students. Allowance, we can take a look. Less was we we're offering twenty five hundred dollars and one year it was boost to thirty five hundred dollars. Well, we need to look at our whole financial picture for the availability. And this is something that. We can consider when drafting our. Estimates as for the certain programs. Well, for the true high program, it is a bachelor degree. In terms of. Accreditation is still different than any other. The degrees. And so whether we would classify some degrees as. A vocational, we are conducting a pile scheme by identifying a few subjects first. For example, this applied degrees. They compared to tradition was in terms of enrollment or qualifications and learning effectiveness. We want to gauge the effect difference for more clear positioning. It is is a pilot scheme we are launching. We just started and we haven't started enrolling students. Will look at the results to see what's with the next step. Next, Miss Yen is young. Want to follow on my own question, E D B Lang O five nine on national education. It's honor tomorrow with National Education Day, even though it is the summer break. We're doing a summer break. How do you? Take forward all that day's activities. I know that national security. Is now infused across the curricula. I know that E D B has done a lot for the past two years. A work with different organizations and teachers to. You are providing training on that which should be encouraged. I noticed there's some school where sing the national anthem. Didn't really strictly enforced to rule. Some school just played the national anthem, but not required a student to sing and no student actually sang the anthem. So Secretary, in terms of twenty twenty two, on twenty sixth of February, the E D B issued a circular to schools reminding them. To demonstrate the solemnity of National Anthem issuing guidelines. That no songs we played after playing of the anthem. Is that because due to a past incident and how many schools were involved and how do you supervise the school? I require them to students to sing the anthem to understand the objectives of the anthem. But the national anthem. The education is part of the school curriculum. A national anthem is a symbol of our country. And every student should know the national anthem, know how to sing and how to respect and know its background and its significance. While we issue a circular earlier or guidelines earlier. That you can't immediately play another song right after the anthem. Sometimes we notice that some. Of the school maybe not too familiar with the operations. Well, some played the school's anthem after the national anthem right away. Maybe it was convenient. However, it was wrong. That's why we issue a guideline after playing the the national anthem. You need to pause for some time before. Uh, play or singing other songs. This is a requirement. And this symbolize a respect for the national anthem. This is not a huge issue. How for this important for the school logistics and student understanding. We're not trying to hold anyone. Countable as long as the school followed guys from now on, it should be fine. Is some of the school refused to play the school anthem and tell, let me know which was will follow up. And our calls actually visit the schools to see their promotion of national anthem. And the of flag and. An emblem and so on. Next, Miss Doctor Priscilla. Would like this opportunity to ask you, Secretary, two questions. The first question, well, the secretary mentioned on after the school class resumption. You can provide free R A T kits to all students. As if involved as hefty expenditure, though for a fall along with the textbook assistance. How much money would cost to distributing R T kits to all students? And second, on the digital reconstruction after the pandemic. Well, after the Black Lives Rights for the pandemic, our. Schooling was severely interrupted. In terms of graphs and technology to for remote teaching at primary and secondary kindergarten level. They have yet to fully master it. Besides helping the children to master this. Care mandate the teachers. To attain a certain level of proficiency in remote teaching so that it will not be interrupted by other. A sudden events and how much expenditure are we talking about? Will the E D B consider? Secretary Young. For the past two years. From the twenty nineteen Black Lives Rights and obviously COVID nineteen pandemic and up to the present. The schools needs to suspend from time to time. We see that students and teachers generally can adapt to the home learning. And trend, especially at the primary, secondary schools. Though it's a lot of online teaching. Well, generally, we provide a lot of support, for example, organizing seminars and sharings and professional support and resources for the schools. And from the feedback I got from schools. Most teachers can master it well. The kindergarten is a special case. We don't suggest them. The kindergarten is a special case, we don't suggest them. And to dive into online learning as they are young, we don't want to protect their eyes. Well, I. They can just do some other activities to achieve the same learning outcome. Going ahead, we'll continue to take forward. Uh, teacher's understanding of I T. Even not for online learning, or even using I T as classroom is still very important. Therefore, we will continue to take it forward. As for the R T kits. We wish the resource to be spent on the needed places, definitely should concentrating on those from disadvantaged families. By giving them free R T kits. Speaking about the numbers, we currently helping one third of the students in total. Have you are demanding and for everyone, that expenditure will be threefold, like these three, we have reserved ten million R T kits. For one month, there'll be thirty million kits for every student in Hong Kong, next Miss Maggie Chan. And thank you, Deputy, and declaration interest. I'm the National Security Speaker of an education organization, I'd like to follow on E D B O O three. On the national education, national security, education, media, information literacy, education, the administration. Has given detailed response and according to article nine of the N S L. The N S L education has been a good, a proper focus and whether there will be a recurring funding and value for money analysis, I have three questions for the secretary. First, would you consider make use of big data analytics to analyze the students? Uh, knowledge of the national studies as a K P I, would you consider digitizing the national education? So that we can collaborate with the G B A schools and government departments and museums, so that this. Student can understanding the G B A history in the classroom. And finally, would it consider adding permanent posts in the schools to coordinate national education and national security education? Secretary, please. The for the big data analysis. What due to advancement in I T. And the use of tech in education, big data analysis will be here to stay. Will devote more resources to study on that, I think is more than national education. The education sector as a whole should consider making use of the big data. In different subjects or in different learning phase to facilitate the schools and the teachers. To provide a student a better education experience, this is should be our long-term goal. As for the digitization. We can do that for the information and materials. Well, in terms of nation development. And all this kind of materials, we make use of the. Mainland, for example, like videos or books. And how do we improve that and how could I T improve the digitization is something we can actively consider. For national education is just limited on the knowledge level. We hope to if impact their attitudes and spell assess a national identity and their thinking. So it's not just about digitization by having exposure. And also teachers learning by example and peer influence and hold a society create the atmosphere. Uh, before we can achieve this objective, therefore, we all need to work on that. And so whether we need a task as dedicated post on this. Will come up, there will be a stabbing proposal to add some mid-level positions in primary schools. Well, owing to the practical need for the secondary schools, the. All of these, the of the schools may able to deploy on officer. Well. Would the education panel give is blessing and able to get the funding application approved in the F C as well?
Next, Mister Edmund Wong, thank you, Chair. My question, E D B O O four. The question was raised by Mister Rock Chen. It's about mutual recognition for professions, given the close connection between Hong Kong and the rest of the Greater Bay Area. For the accounting sector, the Education Bureau has said that the Institute of Chartered Public Accountants. Has a mutual recognition account arrangement with the mainland counterparts. But we don't see. The company happening often, there were only eighteen hundred applicants and there were just a few hundreds successful ones. But I understand this should be left to the relevant professional bodies to sort out with the authorities. And for career life and life planning. Whether it's at secondary schools or post-secondary institutions. Students, we have to find out their area of interest and then they enter sector. But my point is that, sure, students' interest is a factor to consider, but we also have to be mindful of the talent we need. So that we can get the students to join the sectors. The relevant interest, education is an investment, not an expenditure. The Education Secretary said that information would be offered to universities to offer. The appropriate programs, but secretary, can we have this kind of career guidance or orientation at secondary schools? So that students can try out something they're interested in. And then. We folk and then we also focus on the kind of jobs that Hong Kong actually needs. How much will go into investment and career support in these areas, secretary? Chair, over the past few years, we have been pushing for life and career planning and education. The point of doing this. Is to get students exposed to different sectors and get people from different sectors to explain things at schools. So that students can understand what the work entails, what the sectors like in those industries and find out whether they're interested in. A job and whether they're suitable for the profession, many people may want to become a doctor. But after finding out about what the doctor's work entails, they may, they may realize that this isn't for them, say, someone may be scared of sight of blood. So this is an area of focus in life and career education. At secondary schools. There's also a dedicated post for life planning. We had this group that conducted a review on this point. This was a review on vocational and professional education and training. Career and life planning will be moved to junior secondary school, even possibly to senior primary schools. So that we can help students to find out early on. What work is like, they can find out what each sector is like, but well, for for sure, this we won't go into great detail at that point. And then the students can make decisions about where they want to go in the future. We also have applied learning courses now. At senior secondary school level, students get to find out about different sectors, thank you, Chair. Next, Mister Lerman Quang.
Thank you, Chair, I want to follow up on reply zero number E D B O two nine, this is about. Non-Chinese speaking students and the subsidy for them to sit for exams. From some private schools. That do not offer. Local curriculum. Some South Asian students managed to apply for examination fee remission, especially. For examination fees for like G C S E or other exams, they get remissions. For subjects for Chinese language subjects in those exams, but the remission scheme has stopped recently. Is the requirement is now that only those sitting for the exam through a local private schools can get the remission. And not many applicants have applied for these remission schemes. And there aren't many South Asians candidates in non-local curriculum at private schools. And given a small number of students. The government has been encouraging non-Chinese speaking students to take part in to sit for local examinations and join the civil service. Can the bureau consider not the possibility of getting. Making examination fever mission possible for non-Chinese speaking students in non-local curriculum. Yesterday, the rapid energy test kits were handed out and long queues occurred, as the chief executive said yesterday. The daily R T tests will be conducted for the first three weeks and then there will be a review. Can the government show more understanding for parents so that every student gets R T kits? Just so they can go back to school in a safe environment, two points, Chair, briefly on the R T kits. R T kits are available. On the market. And the prices have no sign of an unreasonable increase. The government's position is to help those that is students in need to underprivileged students in a targeted fashion. We want to focus our resources on helping these students, now turning to the non-Chinese speaking students. As the member pointed out, our position is to encourage Hong Kong students, whether they are Chinese speaking or not, it doesn't matter, to. Take part in the local education system, some non-Chinese speaking students. May have joined the school system in the late stage or they're at a less advanced Chinese. Language education, when they take, when they sit for a public exam on Chinese student, a Chinese language that may prove challenging. For those sitting for Chinese language in a non-D S E public examination. But we can. For those in a non-local curriculum. They're off their possible options at different private schools. Many other people sit for such exams, not necessarily the ethnic minorities. This is not something we wanted to achieve from the get-go, so that we won't be looking into that for now, next, Mister Staneyum.
Thank you, Chair. I thank the secretary for the response, A D B O four three and O four two. Many members have raised questions about the effort on national education. Teachers matter in education, the Education Bureau says, a lot of resources have gone into teachers' training. In this area, especially for national education. To what extent has the teachers' training covered in service teachers? How much time do teachers have to spend on the relevant training every year? That's my first question. And the second point, a follow-up on the U G C, on February eighth this year, the Tai Kung Pao. Reported that the U G C. Became an A T M machine for academics seeking to destabilize our city, has this loophole been plugged? The U G C has many links with the U S Fulbright Program. Has national security been considered? In relation to this point, the Fulbright Program. Engages in infiltration. Is the Education Bureau aware of this problem and are there plans to plug this loophole, secretary, please? The chairman. In terms of training for teachers, for new join newly joined teachers, in-service teachers, those teachers. To be promoted, there are core training programs that are required for these teachers over the past year or two. We have many training sessions dedicated to the basic law, the Constitution and national security. We also work with schools to look into ways to incorporate national security into teaching. Over the past two years. Many teachers. Have received training covering national education and national security, the relevant work will continue. At different stages, there are always, there's always a way for teachers to dig deeper into these areas. We still have work to do in national education. This matters all the more importantly in education, because teachers inform how students see the world. The relevant work will continue and we will step up the efforts. So that there can be an atmosphere for both teachers and students to find out more about a country and develop a sense of belonging to the country. The second question raised by the member, the Fulbright program. I want to invite U G C to tell us more about this, Professor James Tang, please keep it brief.
Thank you, Chair. We have suspended this Fulbright program on our part. It's an exchange program. Hong Kong scholars can go on research visits to different U S institutions, but due to external factors, we have suspended this program. Next, Mister Dennis Lo. Maybe he stepped away. Miss Quatling Li. Thank you, Chair. Thank, I want to thank the secretary. For taking forward various measures to improve education in our city. Some follow-up questions for me, E D B O two two about national education. The bureau has said that we want to encourage national education, but for privately-run schools and international schools, there are E D B guidelines. But the bureau hasn't even provided a national flag to these schools, now how can you encourage these schools to promote national education? In promoting national education, how do we assess the effectiveness for all the resources that have gone into these areas, that is apart from teachers' training, et cetera? A second point, STEM education, E D B O two three, I know much work has been done. But STEM. Has been done as something like an extracurricular activity and it's fair one-way street. STEM hasn't been incorporated into schooling yet, but how to systematically nurture our students? So that students can receive reference education, especially like coding. And also from integrated education, E D B O two six in two thousand and four. I underwent this thirty-hour basic training. As I said, this more than seventy-three percent up to twenty twenty-one have completed the thirty-hour basic training. And it's expected that in twenty twenty-six to twenty-seven, we can have the rate at eighty percent. For twenty-plus years, we have had integrated education. Many students with special educational needs have already been studying at mainstream schools, shouldn't would be pushing. The completion rate of this training to a hundred percent, it makes no sense, we have. Shouldn't would be pushing the completion rate of this training to a hundred percent. It makes no sense. We have got all teachers going to training over so many years. Another point about the life planning point raised by Mr. Edmund Wong in real life. We have dedicated people offering support, but how do you assess the effectiveness of these measures? That is that schools offer a variety of offerings in this area.
Secretary, please. For a live planning. Well, each schools have different circumstances. And the student may have a different expectations. Well, based on the needs of the students, the schools should turn the aspirations into part of our work routine. Well, in terms of the business school collaboration for assessment results, the school has the primary responsibility to do proper life planning than Joe Chou with the student development plans on inclusive learning, integrated education. Well, the number of new teachers or dropout teachers vary year by year. Of course, we hope the more the merrier and that's the general direction. In terms of free induction training, there is some fundamental training on catering to learning differences. And catering to special educational needs. The teacher training already incorporated such elements. Therefore, we not only look at them completing their thirty hours of training, we shall reviewed holistically. I agree with Ms. Squawk. That we shall work harder to make sure that we can achieve a hundred percent participation rate. There are different kind of training for teachers, for example, the new secondary curriculum and other types of training. And coding is not, is now in the curriculum. In the STEM education, try to nurture the student problem solving ability and draw on interdisciplinary knowledge instead of a standalone subject, we will conduct a review on a STEM education. And for private school, international schools, we made our requirements clear in the guidelines. We can make some adjustments. If let's say they don't or can't buy a national flight, of course, we can procure it for them. Next, Mr. Chi Kuo Keng. And thank you, Deputy Chairman. E D B O one, oh, and oh, four, nine. Well, a lot of the childcare says in the card is taking part in the scheme also running any classes. The E D B statistics failed to show the impact of the COVID nineteen to the end class and kindergarten. For the two to three-year-olds are unvaccinated, therefore, we don't know when classes can resume. I wonder if E D B has any cost resumption reach in place, otherwise you should arrange subsidy to the affected kindergartens and C C Cs. And for the tight over grant for the kindergarten, so that we lost more experienced teachers during the COVID nineteen. Where are seeing layoffs? The should the secretary has addressed this problem. I hope that the E D B should consider offering financial support so that we can retain talent and maintain teaching quality. And oh, four and nine. To cope with the drop in student population, besides full-scale small class teaching, why don't the E D B improving the teachers' student ratio so that some teachers are dedicated to follow on STEM or a life planning and so on. So as to enhance our teaching quality, finally, I hope the E D B consider lowering the threshold for class opening. The end classes, it's not something handled by the E D B. We're only responsible for kindergarten, three years or above. The end classes are governed by a different legislation under the S W D. And all along, there would be in touch with the sector. When discussing the class resumption, the S W G will consider how the end class should reopen over the past period. For those three years or lower or the C C Cs, how to provide extra support for them, there are measures in place. For the kindergartens, even though they have been hit by the pandemic. However, if they ticked in the scheme, our subsidy has not decreased. So most of the kindergartens, even though they might have the pressure in enrollment. Well, we are paying the subsidy based on the headcount in January, so most of the kindergartens in the scheme. In terms of beating the payrolls, this should not be a huge problem for them. As for the drop in birth rate, I hope to work with the sector to address this challenge. Our stance has been clear. We need to make sure there's optimal use of resources. However, how therefore we not for the sick or maintaining certain number of schools and try to keep as many as possible, we hope to improve the teaching quality. Even some of the school may need to close their country in a gradual manner to reduce the impact to the schools and the students and the teachers. That is something we hope to work with the whole sector. It was just purely to keep schools to in despite severe under enrollment, this might not be the best solution. For any way to get improved teaching, we're well to consider. However, we hope to get the public support for any enhancement measures. Where we need resources, we will go to the F C for applications. Next, Mr. So Cheng Wing.
I'd like to follow up on. E D B O seven. Well, the schools. This change between face-to-face and online learning, this put a lot of pressure on students and teachers. Then now that we are resuming gradually face-to-face classes, there will be new challenges and not objecting face-to-face classes. I'd like to follow up on the rationale of resumption. First, and just yesterday, Hong Kong announced of having one thousand two hundred and seventy-two new cases daily. The administration expect the case to plateau for quite some time. The vaccination rate between three to eleven is just sixty-two percent. That's just first shows. The chief executive set in the P C set, this is unsatisfactory. And there were many cases, confirmed cases, deterioration and eventually death. And and there are quite a number of parents who are objecting to resuming classes. What is the justification for resuming classes? And what's the criteria for resuming their classes? Over the past two years, we all know that classes were or were suspended as soon as there are any spike cases. On the fourteenth of January, when you announced your full class suspension, how many infection cases were there? And for twelfth or fourteen, there were a fourteen and thirteenth of January, just nine cases. And the data announcement, five cases. They're in the single or double digits. Yesterday, there were twelve hundred and seventy-two cases. And Guangzhou and Shenzhen, and they suspending classes for a dozen cases. And not talk about the other countries. So what's your scientific proof for this? The first case for resuming classes? What is this decision-making mechanism for real resuming classes? On twenty-first of March, D C announced that nineteenth of April, the kindergarten priority, where school shall resume the classes. And while the case of the day were fourteen hundred and hundred fifty-two. In such a severe situation, how can you project they can resume classes on nineteenth of April? Are you a prophet? Mr. So, your question is clear. You're asking the secretary for the justifications. Mr. Young, please. And the governor explained over the past few days, it's about striking a balance. On one hand, we're still having the pandemic. On the other hand, we need to consider the over interest of students. We're not just looking at the number. Whereas the daily caseloads is a factor. Well, for January, that was the start of the fifth wave. And students have extending, but it's attending face-to-face classes. We are now having a downward trending situation and much higher vaccination rate. And student do not have face-to-face classes for a few months already. We need to consider what? Well, it's not just the physical health, with a psychological health and learning and personal growth. We need to consider that holistically in making this decision, of course. There are diverse voices in the community and some spoke out against class resumption. Some may share the views of Mr. So that claim that the reopening is premature. We took in the advice of the medical experts. If we not allow half-day classes, and we implement all the anti-malicious measures like a ticket temperature and washing hands and R T test daily. And while can take forward the vaccination drive. And we're also improving the hardware at school. On the balance, we need to let the student to resume face-to-face classes on a half-day basis. We try to avoid having meals until we reach a certain percentage in secondary schools and with those kindergarten and primary school out of consideration. We need. If we need to wait till pandemic is over, that's maybe quite some time away. Is it in the student interest for the student to carry on with online classes? We've decided we should resumed face-to-face classes A S A P. The C has said, and I believed there may be some sporadic cases from schools. And all in all, what is sick of developments of the school, it should, we still should go ahead with the classes.
Next, Mr. Benson Look. Thank you, Deputy Chair. Want to follow up on E D B O three, nine. It's a question about national education. The bureau's reply goes like this. You're taking this multi-point entry coordinate multiple or pro multi-pronged and coordinated approach. There have been exchange activities. I can see more and more resources have been put into this area. In twenty nineteen, twenty and twenty twenty-one, we had black flood violence and then came COVID. The expenditure on these areas has been zero because nothing could be done. My question for the Education Bureau, what will be the estimate and projection for this year? Discussions are still going on about the resumption of quarantine free correspondence travel and we're still monitoring the situation. After the assumption of correspondent travel, can we do mainland exchange tours again? I agree with this approach, multi-pronged and coordinated approach. Exchanges have been stopped, but do we have alternative plans? In case we don't have the corresponding assumption by the end of this year. Take the training for civil servants as an example, they do online training sessions. Can we do online training for schools as well? Another area of public concern. I was glad to hear. Now we're talking about the daily rapid antigen tests. This will help identify infected students early on. But the R T kits will only be handed to students in need. I hope you could be generous in handing out the R T kits. Some schools are concerned. They don't may not have enough stock of R T kits ready. Some schools are trying to procure more R T kits. Can you make sure schools have enough R T kits readily available? Otherwise, families will be struggling. Chair, Secretary, can you give him a brief response? For R T kits, we will deliver those to schools as soon as possible. We will set aside a number of R T kits for schools and families. And we will make allowances in those areas. If schools run low on R T kits, they can get in touch with us. And we will see how we can provide more kits. There are many big-hearted people in the community donating supplies, including R T kits to schools. This shows that we are united in fighting COVID and this matters. And turning back to the point about exchange tours. We have set aside enough money for roughly a hundred thousand students to go on mainland exchange tours. But this will depend on the resumption of quarantine free cross-boundary travel. If it goes through and the resumption goes through, we spend the money on exchange tours. Before the reopening of the border, we encourage schools to make use of online options to maintain exchanges. Next, Mr. Michael Ting.
Thank you. Secretary. Experts are saying that in fifteen years' time, sixty to seventy percent of the jobs we see now will no longer exist in fifteen years' time. So we need a major review over an overhaul of our school curriculum. By the time the students graduate, they need to find a job, but there were only a few months of time left in your term in office. When you when I talked to Mr. John Lee in one of the online sessions, I would ask him questions about how we can equip our students for the future. But my question for you today is about this. This requirement that
This requirement that students have to do mandatory R T every day before going to school. You have set aside ten million R T kit for roughly three hundred thousand students in need. And for the other four hundred thousand or so students, they're on their own. Even if you include those without the economic need, it only takes you another a hundred million dollars or so. This is not something in the billions. But my concern here is about the philosophy, Secretary. Whenever you make something mandatory, doesn't it makes, doesn't it make sense that you make it free for people to do it? You're saying that students and parents can get an R T kit when they ask the schools for it, but people are saying that. The government is now making something mandatory and the tools are not provided for free. Does it mean that going forward, whenever there's a rule to do something on a mandatory basis, what's needed will not be provided for free? Secretary, when you make something mandatory, can't you make it for free? Do the schools ask parents whether they are in financial need when they approach schools for R T kits? Indeed, there is, this is something about the idea itself. In using public funds, we put them to effective use by helping those who are in need, but you're making R T tests mandatory. There are enough supplies of R T kits on the market. The read, the prices are reasonable. For the average family, there is certainly an extra expenditure. Secretary, I'm out of time, I want to make this point, you make, you're setting this precedent. You're, you're not providing the tools for free in a mandatory exercise, can you think this through? Mister Tin has just made this point. Next, Mister Ma Feng Kwok. Thank you, Deputy Chair. I want to follow up on my question, E D B O four one. The plans of the Education Bureau in helping students pursue further studies on the mainland. In twenty fourteen. In fact, twenty thirteen, there were two thousand ninety something. And by twenty twenty one, we have just about seventy two, so there has left been adjustment in this area. In the fourteen five year plan. Hong, Hong Kong should play an active role in contributing to the Greater Bay Area. Want more young people to go to the Greater Bay Area. Career prospect, we have a key role to play in young people's decision making. I want to find out from the Education Bureau, what measures have been taken and what measures will there be? For those interested in pursuing further studies or finding a job on the mainland. What would be done to provide them with the relevant information? For students and parents, what kind of support will be made available to them? On so that they are better informed about pursuing further studies and finding jobs there. And what's the expenditure involved, these are not reflected in the responses. The question and response broadly touch on ways. About to live and work in the Greater Bay Area. There are also references to specific sectors. Different professional bodies. We'll have to engage with the mainland authorities about the mutual recognition of qualifications. For students. Much work has been going on. It's about deepening students' understanding of our country. Exchange tools help students familiarize themselves with our country. And the institutions, the systems in those places. For someone who have never been to the other parts of the Greater Bay Area, they wouldn't be finding a job there. We have to help the students experience the place and see the place. And then they are feel assured about living there and working there. This will also require cooperation. Different people and companies do talks at schools on work and life on the mainland. Exchange tours are more than just seeing different places. It's also helping students find out about companies there so that they're confident in the area and they see a future there. So for secondary students in particular, we are making all these preparations. Next, Mrs. Regina Ip. Thank you, Deputy Chair. I echo the view of the previous member. This day requirement about R T tests before school, the government should provide R T kits for free. It shouldn't be restricted to those on C S S A. Our city's economy has been heavily hit by COVID. For those not on C S S A, their income has taken a toll. For families with multiple children, the R T kids will cost them a lot. Yesterday, at the panel on health meeting, I raised this question. How many school places would there be for training up healthcare workers? Or there will be further places for clinical psychologists that is training for psychologists. So many things have happened in our city and during COVID times, many people have been cooped up at home. Children don't get to go to school, they don't get to interact with their peers and it takes a toll on their psychological well being. So there's a need for places for clinical psychology. The clinical psychology is something. In master's programs. You have to do a degree in psychology before they can go on and go into clinical psychology. Deputy Chair, we have talked about this R T kit issue and we've explained our position. And this for school places for psychology programs at universities. But we can get in touch with universities about this. Clinical psychology programs. Require a degree in psychology first. There's a need, there may be a need to increase places in psychology programs. We will. Let universities know about this. It wouldn't be realistic to just increase spots for clinical psychology programs without increasing places for psychology programs. We will discuss this further with the Food and Health Bureau. Will Mr. Duncan Chu will go next and then we will wrap up. Thank you, Deputy Chair, I want to follow up on the question raised by Professor Sun Dong E D B. It's about scientific research. You can make the investments, but there may not be return, but there would be certainly be no return without investment in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. To R G C, that's roughly one point three billion dollars. But I found out from those in scientific research, there has been no increase in the grant. Approved each year, seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars per year. That poses a problem for those in scientific research. And in terms of a direction approvals are given in trienniums. Would there be a discussion about the directions in granting of in funds? Whenever the funding is approved, would the different weightings be discussed? Right now. Some grants are given once a year and it takes time to prepare the documents. And the funding doesn't arrive until a year later, that's probably too long for scientific research projects. Some teams engaged in scientific research. Have said that those with well known popular professors will get a higher score in the approval process. Can we just set aside some of the funding for younger professors and teaching assistants? So that they get the opportunities to pursue the research. You mentioned that you're working with the National Natural Science Foundation of China. But in twenty twenty two and twenty three, only eighty million dollars or so has been set aside on that front. Classes will begin for many tertiary institutions on the mainland. Can we have more similar projects like this? Can we have this funding pool? For universities in Hong Kong and other parts of the Greater Bay Area to apply. I will give a brief response. And if there's time left, I will ask the V G, the U G C to tell us more. We have done a review in this area. We have put in funding. For research purposes, there has been massive increase in funding. So that there is an increase in resources for funding. Under R G C Research Grants Council, different projects are going on. Some of for research done by younger scholars, there it covers a wide range of topics and areas. When we go for these things in greater detail. We will explain the operation of R G C and U G C and then we can have further discussions. And we won't have time for elaboration from the U G C and we have our next meeting lined up. So we will conclude here for the session on the education. At ten past, we will proceed with the session on security. Thank you.